We are back in workshop mode. And so, we are ready for questions and comments about Thoroughgood and/or Hermitage. Ms. Melnick?
Okay, so I took, I took a lot of notes.
It's official, it's yours.
It is, it is on. I took a lot of notes. And there was one reoccurring theme, which was, the Thoroughgood community is in no hurry to build this project. So, my question is, can we delay this project and move on with our capital improvement? Maybe build another school and put this one on hold for, just further, further down the road? Just stay in the Thoroughgood and go to the next one? I don't know who is next on the list. Was it Betty F. Williams?
Yes ma'am.
And, um, and just, I don't, I don't know what to say other than that. I know it was, we're a million dollars in, in planning with architects, but if this community is just as happy at their old Thoroughgood, then perhaps that's just where we need to stay. And, and we think about, we just rethink. Or perhaps if there's some swing, I know, I'm getting a lot of that, it's not, it's not fair, it's what I wrote down. I, I've, I heard, okay, then.
Decorum, we, this is not a public hearing, so we are not going to entertain yelling from the audience.
Well, and here's part of the problem, is, this was stated too. Not everyone is going to be happy, and I understand that. This is a very, it's a very difficult situation. We had professionals with thousands of years of experience, as Mrs. McLeod said, make what they thought was the best decision, given the circumstances. And I propose another option, and then there are comments from the crowd against that also. And that's what's going to happen unfortunately, in this situation. And so, that's why I said perhaps we put this on hold, we rethink, we move forward with another project, and we revisit this at a later date.
Mr. Edwards?
I was all prepared to talk about when I stood up there and begged the school board to leave my kids in portables, because I did not want them to be, have to change schools two or three times. But, but I, I heard enough tonight, that, um, I think we need to put this on hold for a week or two, to give the staff an opportunity to digest, to look for some options. There are options that might open up if we moved ahead with Betty F. Williams downstream. I have no idea of the impact. I think the plans will likely be, not get very stale on the shelf for Thoroughgood for a while, but I don't know. I, you know, I'm, I'm not the engineer. We have, have those on staff, and I think we need to hear from them. But I'd certainly like to put my stick in the spokes of the wheel for a couple weeks, and give the staff an opportunity to come back and maybe give some other alternatives to us. Um, you know, I just, I came here tonight prepared to listen, and I won't say ignore, but I really thought we had a really good plan. I still think we have an acceptable plan, but maybe we can come up with a better one. So, that's, that's what I'm.
Mrs. Weems?
Thank you, and thank you for those have, those who have emailed us and come tonight. And I just want to apologize, because we should have had this, in my opinion, I'm just speaking for Carolyn Weems, we should have been having this conversation months and months and months ago. I think, I think any viable option should be brought, should have been brought forth to any community impacted, any option, and they should have been completely explained, and then we would have gone from there. So I do apologize for the frustration this has caused so many people. But I do, I, I hear that, that your, some are satisfied and just staying, but, but I know too, like, what was floated around the Betty F. Williams, what was that slated on our, on our slide today? Is what year was that?
I think in the CIP, it's 2032.
Okay, 2032.
It's the next elementary school in the CIP.
Yeah, so it's the next elementary, so, I mean, I just.
We switch.
Yeah, oh, so you're just saying about switching that, but, I don't, I didn't get that this community was ready to wait, you know, six or seven or eight years, but anyway, that's okay. I've got, I've got a few questions that I just want, want answered, while we've got the folks here, so they can hear the answer. Okay, with the bathroom situation, how far is it? Is it two football fields, or is it 30 yards? I want to know how far it is from the last portable to the bathroom? Can I get an answer on that? Because I've heard anywhere from 30 yards to two football fields and everything in between. Do we have an answer, anybody? An accurate answer?
I really will have to go back. I don't, I don't have a scaled plan, and so I can, you know, in pretty short order, get you an exact dimension from the GIS system.
Okay.
So, you know, I just, I'm estimating from a screen, is not the best way to do it. So, you know, let me, let me go back in the office.
Okay, yeah. We need to, we need to get that.
Sure.
You know, I share the concerns of my, of a six-year-old granddaughter, that I'm very, know what she would do if she was traveling two football fields. And I also know that my son, Beamer, would have made it somehow to the baseball field on his trek to the bathroom. So I have great concerns about that, that amount. The covered walkways, how much would that be to have covered walkways? Tony, did y'all price it out? You said it was too expensive, do we have a price? Estimate ballpark figure?
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna give you a ballpark figure of $75,000 to $100,000.
Okay, okay. And then they, we had a speaker speaking at great depth about the codes. I'm assuming that we've looked into that, the supplemental classroom, according to the code, can you have a school with that many portables for two years? Are the first graders in compliance with the bathrooms? The bathrooms linked from the school? All that stuff? Have we, I mean, have we?
Yes ma'am, yes to all that. You know, the, um, each, each portable classroom is required to have a building permit. So we, we've got two permitting issues. We've got the, the issues with the local code official, with Sherri Hanner, who does this quite a bit. And so, you know, we've, we've got to satisfy the local code official, and then we've got the, the recommendations that come down from, from the State Department. And so we have to satisfy both, and we have, and we will.
Okay, two more questions. Emergency with, with the tornadoes, I mean, I live, you know, about three-fourths of a mile from Thoroughgood, and three-fourths of a mile from Hermitage. I'm smacking in between them. And we had a tornado take down 17 of our trees a few years ago. So, so how, how do you get all these kids in, and how long does it take?
All right. I'm, I'm gonna give it a shot, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to the folks in, in our Safe Schools group. I think Dick Ponty is hopefully still here. You know, I know that, that we've talked about this, they, they will seek shelter in the Hermitage building. They've talked to the fire marshal about that. Before I get too much down into the timing and the, and the number of minutes, I'm gonna ask them to, to come up and, I guess, the tall guy, and speak to, speak to that.
Yes, I was, I was out there Friday with the fire captain. And we identified three entrances that would be used. So again, you'd have to time it, to find out what, how long it takes, and that's what we do with drills. But as far as space inside the building, we identified locations that the fire marshal said would be safe places for students in a weather event.
Okay, because I understand that concern, because I didn't even know a tornado had gone through my backyard till, you know, the next morning. And then also, about the, yeah, about the comment about the PE, and that, and I know what room you're talking about, over there in Hermitage. How are, how are we gonna do PE classes there? I don't know how we're gonna do that. Do you just divide them up, and, Sharon, and just have like, one classroom go at a time? Because that room.
We have considered that, Mrs. Weems, and many of our schools now, is it on?
It's on.
Many of our schools now will use the cafeteria. So when kids aren't in the cafeteria eating, they will also use that space for PE. Say for example, we have five fifth grade classes, two of them could possibly be in the E room that we've designated. We can have two in the cafeteria area that we've designated, and we also have the outside space. So that's how we have, you know, started looking at that.
Okay, Emma, thank you. That's, I've got more, but I know my colleagues have more, but, and again, I want to say, Dr. Z and Ms. Minari, my comments, and I think all of us, have nothing to do with your lack of leadership. I have great trust. I have great trust and admiration that whatever we do, that they're gonna make it happen, and their great principles. But I have so many reservations of this plan, I am not comfortable with the plan as it is now. And so I am like Mr. Edwards, I think we need to halt and take a deep breath, and try to, try to look at all other options. And there's just too many ifs, and there's too many questions unanswered, and too many concerns right now. So I hope my colleagues will agree.
Thank you, Ms. Weems. Ms. McLeod?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. While we had about 25 or 30, I'm not for sure, I didn't count them exactly, people here tonight, and there is an online petition, what we didn't hear from are other parents. And so, I'm just being respectful of that, and bringing that to the forefront. It's always the squeaky wheel, and I've been the squeaky wheel in your chairs before, up here talking in front of the school board. So that's the, the part about this too, is, you know, are there parents out there that would prefer to do that versus wait? So, that needs to be addressed as well, Dr. Spence. That's something I would make a request. I have absolutely no problem with, I have two proposals. One, Mrs. Melnick already brought up, is to go ahead and move forward with the renovations at BF Williams. We haven't done much on that project, it would, you know, but, and allowing it to wait. But the other option, I'm feeling pretty good about, because these folks are gonna be here in a few years, when we have to discuss Princess Anne High School. So I'm questioning, could we take the money, roll it into Princess Anne High School, and get that moving faster, and just wait on Thoroughgood Elementary? But I want the people in the audience to understand, you may be waiting until 2025 or later. Your neighborhood will be waiting, potentially anywhere from eight to 10-plus years. It, that certainly, I'm sorry, pardon me.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
This is not a hearing, and I'm not gonna answer the questions. I'm just simply gonna continue. So the other concern we have, is that we have to also recognize that if we, as a board, decide that we will never use swing space, we're setting a precedence, as Mr. McDonald and I were discussing offline. And, and I get the health benefits of that, absolutely, and there are, but, I'm just simply saying, if there is never another option for us, we have set a precedence that we aren't going to do that, and what do we do? You know, Princess Anne High School, I'm, I'm feeling fairly confident that the, what will happen to them is they're going to go to the Kellum High School, so that's not going to be a problem. We have to wait for Princess Anne Middle School to get out of there, to get into their new building, then Princess Anne High School can go, and go all the way down, out here to the municipal center. You know, they're gonna be going across town completely for that swing space. So we're lucky we have an old high school for that. And then the time comes, Bayside High School will get redone, and they're probably gonna go to the old Kellum. I mean, that's, that building is there for a good reason. So we may be able to avoid the portables. But if we were able to build BF Williams, put a sixth-grade wing on it, if we truly believe that's best, to keep those sixth graders separate from the middle school situation, we could do that. And then we would have the Jericho Road available, to go and put the Thoroughgood kids in. So there are multiple options. I, I will just simply state that communication was of importance. I agree with Carolyn, you have to know your neighborhoods, and you have to know your audience. Whereas one part of town may not have even batted an eye at this, you need to know your neighborhoods.
Mrs. Riggs?
I tend to agree with Mrs. Melnick, and probably Mr. Edwards, that maybe we need to wait and relook at this situation. I do not agree with taking our students out of Jericho Road, and I will not vote for that. I think that our sixth graders need to stay there, it's been documented, it's been, we've seen it, we know where they need to be, and I will not vote for that. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Mrs. Manning?
Okay, so what I heard from the community tonight, was that they want to pause in this, and to have a voice, that they should have had months ago, into the process of how this is gonna occur. And let them help decide. Let them decide what is best for their kids, and their community. And so, I heard them saying, if you can't come up with a better solution, then we would consider staying in our school, and asking you to do that. I didn't hear them say, let's stay, you know, we're gonna stay here, don't build us a new school. I did not hear that. I heard them saying, let's have a voice in the process, like we should have had in the very first place. So, I have, and so, with that being said, I still want the community's questions that they have sent to us answered. And so I have, I'd like to go back to my questions, and, and answer those, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, you may.
Okay. So, there was a question at the community meeting, why can't we have an SRO for Thoroughgood or Hermitage? And I don't know if that was ever thoroughly answered.
So the, the short answer on that is, that would be a decision by the Virginia Beach Police Department. We don't have an SRO in any elementary school in Virginia Beach, we don't have a need for them. The police department, working with us, has basically said, they don't, it's not a good use of their time as a school resource officer, to be working in an elementary school. They don't have the same kind of involvement with criminal issues and other issues that they typically get involved in, at the secondary level. And so they, they wouldn't, I don't believe they would support that.
So have we asked them?
We haven't, we've had that conversation about elementary schools.
Right, but we have, we asked them about this specific situation, having 1,400 kids in one spot.
No, we haven't asked them about this specific situation.
I would like to ask them, and just see what they say. Let, let them make that decision, if they don't want to do it. Will the portable doors be locked?
Yes.
Okay. The bathroom buddy system, I have a huge problem with, if we move forward with this. That is the number-one issue I would like to see addressed. Mr. Arnold gave a cost for the swing space. I would just like to know if that includes putting everything back the way it was?
The, the $750,000 to $800,000 is to, the cost over the first two fiscal years, to set up the portable complex, okay? That does not include the costs coming back two years from now, and removing the portables, and eliminating the temporary stone parking lot.
How much will that cost?
I don't have that figure with me.
Okay, I think that's an important thing we need to know.
Understood.
Some other questions that have been asked. Where is the sediment tank for the portable restrooms?
The, the idea with the restrooms is they're connected to the city sewer.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. How old are the portables, and what is the planned use after using them for these two years?
We'll have to get you specific ages. I don't have that information now, and we do not have a planned use for them after this.
Will we be getting rid of them?
Potentially, yes.
Were modular buildings considered?
We've recently had conversations with, with modular system contractors. About 10 or 12 years ago, some folks will remember, when we renovated the school administration building, we, we used, and all the portable classroom, classrooms out in schools were being utilized, we rented modular office space, and it was out on the lawn of, adjacent to building two. And so, you know, that's, it's something that is, in, in a lot of school divisions, is commonly used, where you'll, you'll have modules of eight or 10 classrooms, together with a restroom, under one roof. And so, in this case, you know, you might have four or five cottages, you know, under their own roof, that you, now that is, that is typically, and I'm just, this is a long-winded answer, but it's how things are typically done in school divisions, that, that aren't doing a lot of modernization replacement, like we've done for the past two decades. But that is typically tucked under the general contractor's project, and is designed as part of the project. And so what, what will typically happen, similar to what happened with the, the office spaces, you will rent, the contractor will rent as part of the project, these modular units. You know, it's, they're on the order of about, it's about a dollar to a dollar and a quarter a square foot, you know, so we've, we've got a general idea of what the cost is, that's, and that's annually, so, you know, but that, you know, divisions do it. It's predominantly for divisions that, that don't have their own temporary space, and that, that rent stuff on a one-time, one-time basis.
So is the answer no, that it wasn't considered, or it was considered?
No, it was not considered as part, as part of, part of this.
Okay, I, I'd like to have a cost on that, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
And I think the last question that I have, is, why doesn't the school board authorize the free release of costs and minutes requested by parents?
What?
As one of the speakers said, I think it has to do with what, the, one of the speakers is being charged over $1,000 to receive information on this.
That's relative to a specific FOIA request. Be happy to get you the information about the detailed cost of that. Oftentimes, that's just related to cost of staff time to pull that together, and cost of materials. And so if it's, I need copies of every single thing, every single thing, that becomes very costly, then that's, those are all fees which are allowable under FOIA law, as you know.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Mrs. Holtz?
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. We're talking about reoccurring themes that we're hearing tonight here. I would like to make one perfectly clear. We've heard a lot about the moldy, germ-ridden portables. Well, let's face it, we have several hundred kids right now, tomorrow morning, who are in portables. Let's, they, these are not germ-ridden, moldy portables, that we're putting our kids in, so please, let's dispel that. Also, I think, and Mr. Arnold can correct me, but, didn't we say there was gonna be security on the outer grounds? Because we're hearing a lot about two poor little kids getting stuck in the mud, you know, when they're going to the bathroom. Didn't you say there would be security?
I would ask the audience to keep your comments to yourself, please. This is a workshop for the school board, you may listen. Thank you.
I'm sorry, repeat the question again.
In the notes that we got, we, I read that they were going to be security guards outside, also, circulating through, yes.
Yes ma'am, two additional security assistants, additional custodial staff, so, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clear that up, because most people didn't seem to know that. But I'll tell you, you're probably getting tired of me saying I taught at Thoroughgood, but I did, 30 years. And I can tell you, it's been at least 16 years, maybe more. And my principal, Dr. Ziegrenk is here, she can attest to that. This Thoroughgood building has been on the books for that long. That's how long we have waited to do that. And then when the recession came, it was put back. And we actually had plans on the building, we had an architect draw up the plans, and they were very exciting. Do you remember that? I don't think we should wait any longer for this. However, I'm looking here, Thoroughgood has about 700 kids, so let's assume everybody has one parent. And there's about 700 over at Hermitage. Let's assume they have one parent. This, that's 1,400 people. I don't see 1,400 people here tonight. And I feel that they, they, many of them approve of this plan, and we are not hearing from the majority. But that does happen in a lot of situations that are contentious. Nobody wants to come out and get the ire of angry people. But, so, if nobody wants this, let's give the money to Thoroughgood. That would break my heart if that happened. This project needs to move forward.
Thank you. Mrs. McLeod?
Yes, ma'am. My question is for Mrs. Lanetti, and I believe Mr. Arnold will chime into this. One is, Ms. Lanetti, at some point in time, you and I have had the conversation regarding the sixth-grade center, the property on Jericho, and whether or not we actually can move elementary school kids into there. Am I not incorrect, that there was a reason, there was a concern?
There are some concerns with, that we have had a USDA investigation involving accessibility issues. At the time, when they looked at it, it met the requirements with the considerable amount of time and money had to be put into making corrections. If we were to move an entire school body in there, there will be significant renovations that will need to be made, particularly the grounds area. So, it is not without a cost. I don't, I can't tell you how much it is, but I know that that's going to have to happen based on, it was not, the investigation, we cleared it, and we made some renovations that USDA approved, but it was based on the fact that we only had a small population there, and they weren't using some of the facilities. There will have to be significant changes and renovations done to that facility, so there will be costs moving there also.
Okay, which then, Mr. Arnold brings me to you. So to accommodate the US Department of Education, and make sure it meets all the standard guidelines, do you have an estimate, or, I know you can get it for us, but you have, by chance, do you happen to know that number, to make it so that, that, that building on Jericho could be used for an elementary, full elementary school?
I do not.
Okay. Will you get that for us?
Yes.
Thank you. I know it's probably gonna be a rough estimate, but I'm okay with that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weems.
Yeah, it's always interesting when we hear things, you know, masses, a lot of people, of course, mean a lot of things, but if some ideas that I agree with, that are, that I think are very important, if 700 bring them to me, 700 people bring that idea to me, I'm gonna listen. If five people bring really good ideas, I'm gonna listen. So, I just want to make that clear. And we, we do have to remember that we do have about 500 people that have signed a petition that couldn't be with us tonight, for some reason. So, but anyway, so I understand, and I also want to just comment, that I'm, I'm not worried about a six-year-old falling down and getting mud on their, their clothes, I'm worried about a six-year-old finding themselves somewhere where they're not supposed to be, either by their own volition, or somebody else's. So, um, so that's, I just wanted to clear that up for me. Okay, with the, with the, you know, like, right now at Hermitage, we have wonderful Ms. Carol at the front desk, I love her, the security, and you go in there, you check in. How is that gonna work with the portables? Where's the security to make sure that, if I'm going to eat lunch with my child, who do I check into, to make sure I go to Portable 6, and not Portable 23? Well, not, or say I'm going to take, do something in the classroom, where's the check-in for security for all those portables?
We're gonna have a separate security entrance for Thoroughgood parents, and I think it's closer to the bus, if I'm not mistaken, and parents will enter there.
So they'll enter the Hermitage building, or they'll enter a portable security?
Well, the Hermitage building, they'll have their separate security system.
Okay.
Yes.
Will enter the building, and then they'll be told if they need to go to which portable to go, to cut through the building?
Exactly.
Okay. And, and just a question for after-hours, for teachers that are, you know, in Portable 43, what's, what's happening after-hours for the safety of the staff and teachers that are, stay until six or seven, way past dark working? Is there anything there?
Probably that's something we have to, you know, put more, you know, consideration to at this point in time.
Because now, I mean, now is there security, or is it, do custodians usually watch, watch the teachers out, or what's happening now?
We have our night custodians, of course, but our security assistants don't usually work past, you know, the regular operating hours.
Okay, okay. All right, I'll let my colleagues go, I don't want, want to hog up everything.
Thank you, Ms. Weems. Mrs. Melnick?
Okay. So, in reviewing these notes again, I just wanna, I just want to say, there was also a lot of talk about noise, construction noise, and dangerous emissions from North Hampton We're gonna have that, that same issue on the campus at Thoroughgood. The construction noise, I can just imagine would be horrible, even in a brick-and-mortar building. And so, I'm gonna ask about what I would deem a less desirable option, but just want to know if, I'm sure it was considered, but I'm just gonna ask anyway. What thought was given to splitting the children, and absorbing them into other schools in the surrounding area? So sending some to Betty F. So sending some to Betty F. Williams, sending some to, some to Hermitage, some to Diamond Springs and Newtown Road, and...
Pembroke, yeah.
And that would be...
I think those conversations have happened before, Ms. Melnuck. I would say very brief conversation in this instance.
Well, I know, and it's less desirable. I just wanted to make sure that, that these parents know that that was also considered because I think people would have a problem with that. We'd have children from the same family split up, fifth grader and a second grader going to different schools. And let me, let me just reiterate, this is, this is very, very difficult. And so thank you for your patience as we continue this conversation.
Thank you, Mrs. Melnuck. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you. Like Ms. Manning, I compiled questions from all of the emails we received, and I, and I got them down to about 21 questions that were asked over and over, and most of them have been answered in the course of the conversation tonight. So I'm going to hit on some of the ones that are either new, based on some of the feedback we received at the hearing this evening, or haven't been touched on yet. So the first thing I want to touch on was, is what conversations, if any, happen around other facilities that might be available to use or lease even? We had a few emails with examples of that. And I want to throw in there a question about the consideration of Renaissance Academy space for Bayside 6th grade campus, if that's still available. I know we have shifted the Adult Learning Center into Renaissance. I'm not sure if that occupancy number is before or after of that, but I wanted to put that out there.
You know, when we've got a swing space issue like this, and this is to Ms. Melnuck's point, you know, you pull a map out, you look at the school zones, you look at where schools are, you want to try to keep elementary kids on elementary campuses. You have conversations like that about splitting them up, and, you know, to Dr. Spence's point, that's a pretty quick conversation. You don't want to, you start splitting families up. And so, you know, so you, that's all part of the vetting that we do is staff. And so, you know, those, you know, those things are done. One of the, one of the comments was, why didn't you put them at, you know, Independence is right down the street? You know, well, you know, the, the solution would have been essentially the same, just at a different location and on a middle school. So we, you know, we consider all of those things when we're evaluating, you know, what is the best swing space solution? We do. And when we own an inventory of portable classrooms like we do, and it's interesting, Tracy Richter, the planner from earlier, who's been, who's a former middle school teacher who's been doing this for a while, you know, we'll, we learned this 11 years ago, the importance of a spare building in swing space, and quite frankly, the importance of portable classrooms as swing space. You know, and so I hate to keep going back to the fact that we have successfully implemented at numerous schools and are currently doing something very similar at DI with 20. So, you know, I, but we, that's all part and parcel of vetting and looking around. And we, you know, we arrived at Hermitage because of proximity to the, to the Thoroughgood school, because of the size of the building, because of the, the size of the campus, and really because it was a fairly new building. And we felt like professionally that it, that it lent itself to be being utilized as swing space. You know, and so that's, that's not a conversation that occurs in 15 minutes. That's a conversation that takes quite a bit of time, and, you know, not only from the, from the facilities guys, but obviously from educators and leadership. And so it's, you know, it's a, we think it's a thoughtful process. So.
Yeah. So understanding that the MOU is that we need to keep 6th grade separate from the main Bayside Middle School campus, was there any thought to shifting them to, if there's space in Renaissance, and then doing the work on, on what is now Bayside 6th?
Not that I'm aware of. No, sir.
Okay. Do we know if there is space there?
Adult Learning.
Well, I don't know if the figure we, you know, if that was before or after.
The problem with Renaissance Academy is the configuration. You have five separate programs already within that building. So you have the TRAP program, you've got CSET program, you've got the 4x4 program, you've got the full-time disciplinary program, and you have the Adult Learning Center program. So it isn't a matter of capacity, it's where you have those programs within the building. In every single one of those instances, you're going to put elementary children in proximity with students who are in high school, or adults. To me, that's an off-the-table conversation.
I think Mr. McDonald, 6th graders, not elementary.
Correct.
They're still...
Okay.
It's my concern that that was there.
Well, I don't know. I mean, maybe we could explore and flip that conversation, but yeah, I mean, it's still 6th grade students in that environment. There are some.
See, did he see you?
All right. So continuing lockdown situations in portables. I assume that in lockdown situations, the students are kept in portables, they're not shifted to shelter in place into the main building?
I'm going to have to defer to my security friend. Come on up.
They always lock portables.
It's going to be situational. You know, if the threat's outside your building, you want to stay in that, in that portable for shelter. The, the good thing in Virginia Beach is the quick response time of police officers so that they get within three minutes to the site. So you just buy in time. But again, it's going to be pretty much situational-driven.
Dick, do you want to address the SRO question that was asked earlier? I think I didn't know what you know.
I spoke with Captain Orr last week, and part of the, you know, the state has guidelines for the SRO program, and part of it, it's tied to community policing. And there's also an educational component, where they teach Virginia rules in the middle school and the high school. So there's no educational component for the elementary. And basically, using that crime prevention model and community policing, you don't have, just like neighborhoods, I don't see, I don't think you see a lot of police cars in Thoroughgood. You know, just like my neighborhood in Shattler, I don't see a lot of police cars back there. There are other neighborhoods not too far from me where you'll see police cars. So, you know, police have to put their resources where the data tells them things occur. So for that reason, that wouldn't be something that they have the staffing.
Thank you. You know, for the board's consideration, I think the calculus, if we are feeling that usage of portables is no longer a thing that's available to us as swing space, we've got really two decisions. One is to, is to keep Thoroughgood in their building and build around them. I did have a question on cost on that. The cost figure that we were given, the $2 million figure, is that, does that include the savings of not building the portable Learning Village? So are we looking at 1.2 million in addition, or?
No, the 1.2 is a delta. And I'll, let me address what that means. You know, you've, you've got a, you've got a set of plans that are roughly at 90%. And so if you, if you desire to build the new building adjacent to the existing building with staff and students remaining in there, then the plans are going to have to be modified. That, that does not mean you throw the plans in the trash can, okay? But the plans are going to have to be modified, you have to add phasing plans, additional site clearing, you know, again, from a, from a constructability engineering perspective, all doable, okay? So that takes time, all right? And so we save, okay, three to four months, all right, on the front end. So you push back, you push back the finishing of the documents and the bidding of the project into probably the fall. So when you elect to build adjacent to and keep kids and staff in the, in the existing building, it takes longer, common sense. You factor in the fact that the well field is underneath, and so, you know, they're in there, you finish the building, you bring in a temporary heat and cooling plant, you move them over, tear the building down, you put the well field in, you do all the site work, all those things. We've, we've done that numerous times on a much larger scale. Great Neck Middle School, built it right behind it, Wentz Woods right behind it. So we've done that, but in sites where there was room and there's not heavily wooded, and you can get separation, whereas as professionals, we're comfortable with that. So that adds on the order of six to eight months. And, and so time is money, and you rent a physical plant. And so we estimate the value of that is on the order of, you know, we had said five to seven and a half percent, so, you know, 1.2 to 1.7. You know, so you add three to four months, and you add six to eight months, before you know it, you're, you know, you're approaching a year in total, and you're approaching an additional cost to the project, which is not in the project budget of about $2 million. You know, time, time is money. I'm, you know, I'm just stating a fact, in today's marketplace, you've heard from us that, and again, I'm just talking to you, this is the calculus of construction cost and inflation, and just simple math, six months is two to two and a half percent on 24 million. And so a year is four and a half to five percent. And so for us, speed to market in the world that we're living in is extremely important, no matter what you're building. Contractors are, there's more work out there, the marketplace is better, people are making money. And so we went through a long period of time where people were giving it away, and we got a lot of buildings for really good prices, and those days are over. And we've seen that. We saw that at DI.
So my calculus is that we either, we either do that and find additional funds in the redesign of the school, or because portables aren't going to be available to us anymore. If we're putting, creating that precedent, then what we need to do is move on to other projects that would then create swing space. So the board's consideration, in my view, I think that's the two routes to go if we're saying that portables are not an option.
Mr. Arnold, go ahead.
Yeah, if I may. You know, if, if the desire is for, if you don't have a swing building, okay? If the desire is to have another type of swing space and portable classrooms are, are no longer acceptable in this division, there is another way to do it. And it's what I just described, and it's what other some divisions do. You, you rent or you buy, you got to figure out where you're going to store them, it's a conversation we've had recently, but you rent the modular units. You, it increases the cost of the, you know, so it becomes a, it becomes a cost of the project. School divisions who don't build much, there's been some enrichment, but they don't do a whole lot, they don't have swing space, they don't even know what it is, and so they rent, you know, 25 or 30 or 40 modular units, put them together in, you know, three nice neat little packages with a roof over top of them and a restroom inside, and it's part of the project. It's, I tell you that, in that it's obviously more expensive when you're doing it that way versus assets that you already own that are flexible, that you have moved around. The engineering solution is not that complicated.
But, if I may, I mean, so we did have some of this come to our attention last week and have some initial dialogue about the modular units. And, you know, so it is, I think it's sort of uber-cost prohibitive on the front end. However, if you're thinking about the need for swing space for future projects, it becomes, if you're kind of amortizing that over some significant period of time, 10, 15 years, 20 years of projects where you're creating swing space, it might become something that the board may want to consider. But there are some pretty significant upfront costs associated with the modulators. And that's the, where do you keep them? I mean, we've, we've got...
Is it the same material?
Facilities. They're essentially portables that are nicer. They've got roofs, they're enclosed, they have three doors, and they've got restrooms on the interior. It's kind of what they come down to.
They're, you know, modular units that you rent, and again, we use them across the street, are, and those were office units. They're, they're constructed similarly, they're, they're, they're meant to be temporary and portable. Modular is a nicer word. They're typically framed out of, you know, stick-framed and panels on them, and, you know, and so they're, now, the upside is, you've got, you've got eight or 10 classrooms under a roof. So, you know, there's the difference. But the, the type of construction is not, not too different. There's still, the code official still views them as, as temporary.
Thank you. I just want to say, what I've heard tonight is that most parents that are here do not accept the current plan. And I'm, but I'm not in favor of moving those 6th graders from the Jericho Road facility. And as Mrs. Lanetti said earlier, we would have to do major renovations to the old Aragona building anyway before we could possibly think about using it that way. I agree with my colleagues that we should possibly either put this school construction on hold, or possibly, the, to me now, the other plan is to keep them in their building where they are and build around them. When I first, when I first started this evening, my two options in my head were either choose, you know, go with the village or go with keeping them in their, in their current building. But then, as the night progressed, and I listened to the parents, I thought that possibly, you know, it's possible now that I'm thinking, possibly put this, this construction on hold and/or keep them in their current building and build around them. So to me, those are the two choices in my head right now, but I'm going to defer now to Ms. Riggs. I think you're on the list. We have four people on the list still, and then I think Dr. Spence would like a chance to speak. So, Ms. Riggs?
Okay. A question I have for you, Tony, is, and we, we're talking about this modular, and we're talking about either renting or buying, and obviously, buying, we have to have somewhere to store it. What's the least expensive? I mean, is it cheaper to rent these than it is to buy them in the long run? I mean, we're looking down the road as well.
Yeah. To piggyback what Dr. Spence said, you know, it's a, it's a significant investment to, to purchase them, and it is also to rent. You know, I think we, we had, and again, this is, this is Tony up here estimating, okay? But, you know, for, to, to rent modular units for a period of a couple of years at, for this swing space, the rental cost alone is in the neighborhood of, of close to $2 million, all right? Now, that is, that does not include the setup and all, you know, that's renting the modular unit. You know, they're, the utility connections and all the, all the wiring and infrastructure and the hooking up of smart boards and Prometians and CCTV, you know, all the things that you hang on them and decking and all, you know, those are all costs that, whether they're portable classrooms or they're modular rented units. So it's not, it's not an inexpensive proposition that is born by the capital, typically by the capital project.
And so a follow-up question to that. If, if we rent them, obviously, these have been used other places, they're rented out, this company owns it to rent them, so these are used buildings or...
Yeah.
Okay, modules. If we bought them, would we be buying used ones? Would we be buying...
Depends on what you...
I mean, I'm just asking this just for...
Depends on what you specify. I doubt we would, if we were going to invest in, in modular units, I think we would probably, I wouldn't say probably, we would definitely invest in new modular units.
Okay. And I guess we have the question out there about how many students, how many schools are using the portables right now, and how many, do we have any elementary schools that have children in portables?
Yes, ma'am.
How many?
That was in the, that was in my presentation. Yeah. I think 11, yeah.
11 elementary schools currently have portables? Is that what you said earlier?
11 elementary schools.
And what is the most portable? What, which one has the most? Is it five, six?
Thoroughgood has 20.
Okay. It's, it's in the, all right. Hang with me. Well, DI's got 20, but you knew that.
Right.
Allen's got one, Thoroughgood's got five. So next to, next to DI, Thoroughgood has, has the most at the elementary level.
And how many other elementaries have it, have them?
One, two, three. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. That's 11.
And they're used as classroom space?
I know for a fact that Centerville has their fifth grade students in portables. And many of them are used for art and music, one day art, one day music, where kids float in and out of the portables during the day.
Okay. And these are the same portables we've had for these many years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm just checking that. So the other statement I want to make is I see that, obviously with all the concerns of the parents, that we need to look again at possibly building around or waiting and coming up with a different plan.
Thank you. Mrs. Manning?
So I would also agree, but I would also suggest that we perhaps explore the option of leaving them at their current campus, but putting a committee together of parents who are here to be a part of that process of how that's going to take place. And then another idea that I'll throw out there, I know Mr. Arnold's not going to like me for this, but to perhaps use another type of heating and cooling other than geothermal, and that would simplify the project. We wouldn't be adding the six to eight months because we wouldn't have to deal with the wellfields.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Edwards is next.
I'm not prepared to say no never on using portables. I mean, we've, I'm pretty proud of what we've done in the last couple of decades by using portables. I think a lot of the things that were said tonight relative to portables as far as unhealthy and all that stuff ignores the fact that we test the things regularly and clean them and we don't allow mold and, you know. I, and as a, you know, somebody that's financially responsible for the taxpayers' dollars, I think for us to sit up here and say, no, we're going to take those couple hundred portable units and we're not going to use them again for swing spaces. I'm not prepared to do that. My suggestion on delaying a week or two was to give the staff an opportunity to roll up their sleeves in response to the questions that the board has had, the comments they heard from the public, and have another opportunity. I don't want to kick this can down the road necessarily, particularly given the numbers that Tony rolled out on what we're going to, in terms of increased cost, we move this back six months, a year, two years, whatever. Those are real dollars that are going to be, sitting on a shelf here, making point whatever percent in the bank so that we can spend 5% or 10% more a year or two later. And that's not a good use of our taxpayer dollars. So I'm looking for an opportunity to revisit this in a week or two or three at the most.
Thank you. Mrs. Muehlneck?
One further comment. One of the things that we have not discussed is the Thurgood neighborhood itself and the input that they had in this process, which was the trees. And they did not want, if I'm not mistaken, a two-story structure in their neighborhood. And these trees were going to provide a buffer for the back part of this building. And if this board decides to leave the Thurgood students in their school and build around them, I'm asking this board to, I'm asking nobody to complain about the steel structure tree that will be in the middle of that building, which I'm assuming will stand in memoriam for the trees that this neighborhood is about to lose. It was an important aspect of this project. So that's my, that's my one comment for the trees.
Thank you. Mrs. Felton?
Good evening, board members. Piggybacking on Ms. Muehlneck's concern about the trees, I remember asking about the trees because I deliberately asked them, had they reached out to the Virginia Beach Historic Preservation Commission, because they usually look in on historic values in neighborhoods. And I asked, deliberately asked about the trees and them saying, responding that the community wanted to keep those trees. Unfortunately, from the option that Mr. Arnold has given us about them staying in and having to put all the equipment there, it looks like we're going to lose those beautiful gorgeous trees. But, but in reference to what I've heard tonight, and I listened well to what we're saying, and I heard the word postpone 11 times, delay twice, and wait, and what really impressed me was when an individual said, why are we rushing? What is the rush? I do take into consideration that they are parents and they are looking out for their well-being of their most valuable commodity, their children, because I would too. That's the first thing that most of my children. And out of all the, out of all of the emails that we received, security and safety kept coming back, security and safety. And I want, even though that I do have grandchildren, colleagues, I do have grandchildren in the Virginia school system. I have at least five of them in five of the, I have five in the five of the school across. And I do pay attention to that as well. I must tell you, my colleagues, that communication is the utmost important thing when moving forward. And maybe, a lot of you don't want to hear me say this, but I remember back in the day that they literally came in a community and built a school and the community did not have anything, nothing to say about it, it was just built. And it was done. So this crowd is leading, they are leading the precedent of, remember, we need to communicate well and not have a lot of disconnection. I do not agree with moving sixth graders in Renaissance. It is, it's built so and it's laid so that it would be impossible to put another entity like sixth graders in the Renaissance. It looks big on outside, but it's really busy on the inside. And I've been there a couple of times and know what that, the entity is on the inside. Just like, and it's been said too, that know your neighborhood and know your community. And I do know my neighborhood and I do know my community. And they will be in uproar as well. So it's not that the community that is in the uproar, any parent in the community be upset if you come without communicating. So I just want to let that be known to the board that we must listen what's here. But I am with my colleagues that agree that pull back, postpone, and look at it again. If the portables, really, if the portables are off the table, if they're off the table.
Said they were.
So if they're off the table, then we really need to step back and take another look at what the community is asking us to do. Oh, Mr. Arnold, this question is to you as well. The fence, you talked about the fence and maybe you did elaborate on it. How tall would that fence be and what type of material would the fence be going around the perimeter of that, the modular scope?
It's chain link fence. I believe the fence on North Hampton is six foot. You know, I've got a, I meant to check and I forgot the, on the neighborhood side, I can't remember if it's four or six feet. Typically, along neighborhoods there, in respect to the property owners, the chain link fences are four. But along roadways, they're six.
So for that, for that community, for that type of community we're trying to build with modular, would that, would the chain link fence be the most doable or conducive for what we are trying to build?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, if, we would, I can't think of a, you know, perimeter fencing on schools is typically, typically a chain link fence.
My next question, thank you. My next question. Did the walkway that you're building, I've been over to Dye, and I see how the walkways around the portables are built, they're connected. So how will these walkways be connected?
Similar. Portable decking, just, you know, like a deck at the, in your backyard, connecting the portable classrooms. Very similar to what's been done for the first eight at Dye and what will happen for the 12 that are, that have been moved there.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Spence, I think you would like to comment on this now.
I would, thanks. I appreciate that. So what I've heard tonight is a lot of parents who care about their children. And, you know, I get that. And I'm a parent too. I've got a, somebody asked if you have a six-year-old. I have a six-year-old. And so I understand those concerns. And, you know, it's a fine line. Board, I think you understand this and I hope our families can understand this. It's a fine line between input and decision-making. Back in the fall, we raised this specter of needing to move to a swing campus over Hermitage. We made a case then, not a public case with you all, but a case for why we thought Bayside Six needed to remain Bayside Six. On that for just a second, this is an emotional issue. This whole thing is, whenever you involve children, you are just really going to ratchet up the emotion, and I understand that. There are some thoughts about Bayside Six as a campus that I think are just emotional. You know, I think if we reverse the conversation and said, I want to close your school to move some kids into it, I don't think you'd feel the same way as you're feeling about saying that to kids who are in a school and believe that's their school community. We gave a presentation earlier tonight and I, whether or not you agree with our presentation and our beliefs about this, there's a school community over there that believes strongly that that school has made a difference for its children. There are parents who believe that being in that small campus has made a difference for their children. There are educators and principals who believe that that place has made a difference for their children. And so as a leader in this community in education, my job is to come to this board and say, these are things that we believe strongly and this is one of them. That Bayside Six is a school and it deserves to be a school. It doesn't deserve to be shuttered and they don't deserve to be pushed into trailers because your kids need to be in a school. So we've got to work together and find other solutions. The fine line I was talking about earlier is that there aren't a lot of alternatives. We presented two essentially to the board, the Hermitage Campus Alternative and then Building On-Site. Those were the two best that we could come up with. You know, we could have found another school site to locate the portables, but again, as Mr. Arnold said earlier, it would have been a function of simply doing the same thing on another school. And so we'd had all the same questions and I think all the same concerns, which are not unreasonable concerns. Again, speaking both as a parent and as an educator, I understand what your concerns are. We have tried to assure the board that we would not put a plan in front of this community that would create a situation that was unsafe for children. I stand by that. I feel good about that. I don't think it's an unreasonable plan, but I also hear your concerns and I don't want to be dismissive of those. I like the idea of taking a break, not a long break, because we've got things we've got to get done. And if I, when I say take a break, you know, the cash register starts ringing for our construction and facilities people because time is money and the costs are going up by the month. But I like the idea of coming back and rather than sitting here and talking about estimates about modular design, coming up with a concept around that and then coming back really and discussing the only real alternative that we have, which is a portable or modular site and then whether or not we build onsite. And if those are the two options, then we certainly can get some feedback from the Thurgood community about those options. And I think that can inform the board and I think we could make a decision that would work for all involved. There is no, we've said it 100 times already tonight, there is no ideal scenario. This is not a perfect thing. What we're trying to do is create the best scenario to make this happen so that we can get a brand-new and vibrant school into the Thurgood community. You know, again, just going back quickly to the fine line, the conversations with the board, it's difficult to go out and say, what do you want to do when we don't have alternatives for you? And so that's part of the problem. And so sometimes there's informing in a community and sometimes there's getting input in a community. And this was a situation where we felt, right or wrong, and I'll acknowledge it could go either way, we felt right or wrong that this was an informing conversation. And, you know, clearly we've heard you and your concerns about communication around that. My team will reflect deeply on that and try to understand how we do that in the future and make sure that we're not in a situation where our parents feel we don't listen because I think this board and my administration and these principals and our teachers listen better than any educational community I've ever worked in. And so I don't want us to be in that situation with you all again, and we'll work and endeavor hard not to be in that situation again. So if I could, with the board's permission, based on what I think I've heard you say, just step back for a minute, come back to you with a couple of real specifics and get your sense on moving that forward. I would appreciate the opportunity to do that. I think we can do that quickly. I don't think that's a months-long process. But I also need this board to affirm for our Bayside Six community that that is not on the table.
At this point in time, we would like to take a straw poll on whether or not we would like to continue keeping the sixth graders in the Bayside Campus. We want to see a straw poll on that. Dr. Spence would like to see that tonight. So I'd like a straw poll or just an affirmation. Is there? We can do a straw poll and a workshop.
At this point, you'd only be straw poll. You're not taking a formal vote to do anything. As long as it's done open, you're fine, but it's not a formal vote because you're not on the actual.
The only thing I object to is the fact that it implies it was ever on the table.
Exactly.
At least in my mind, it was.
I don't think it's fair to ask that question without having other stipulations. I mean, if the students got the same resources at another school and could continue with their small class sizes and the same resources they have now, I would be okay with it. But I don't know what those other options are because we have been told.
Excuse me, Mrs. Manning? You can voice your concern about this, but the administration would like to know if this board is willing to keep the sixth grade campus in the Jericho Road facility. And so at this point in time, I would like to see a show of hands if you are willing to keep those students in that building for the coming year. They need a direction. So because for some reason, this got put on the table and then taken off of the table. And we heard reasons tonight that it should not be on the table. So, you know, you can vote against it or you can vote for it. It's a straw poll. It's not a formal vote.
Can I, can I?
Mrs. Williams?
I think I would like to correct because, I mean, I've been on the board for a while and that space has been very transient and there has been conversations about making it swing space.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah, I agree. So I totally agree, and I think I acknowledged that earlier tonight. And I indicated, you know, that there's been some parallel conversations about that as swing space. It was used for swing space with the old donation school. There's also parallel conversations going out that time about the MOU that we had with the state and whether or not the school was going to get accredited and then, so was it working the way it was supposed to work? And so, again, from my perspective, in straw poll or not, my perspective is the building needs to be what the building is. It's a school, it's a community. I implore you to go back and look at the data around the parents' feelings, the students' feelings, and the teachers' feelings about what that standalone campus has done for that school and that community, and you can't argue with the data. And so I agree. I'm not arguing that it's been a swing space conversation. What I'm asking is for some direction. If we're going to step back and we're going to come back with a number of alternatives for your consideration, and that might be alternatives for the consideration of the Thurgood community, that that's not one of them. And that's really the direction that I need, that that's not one of the alternatives. And I don't think that's an unreasonable ask on my part, given the case that I'm trying to make here for that school and for that community. And, you know, my responsibility is to all of our schools and all of our communities, and I'm trying to balance the needs of these two communities right now. And I'm just asking for that support. And frankly, I think most of the people that are out here listening understand that. If not everybody, then I'm sorry, but that's just my responsibility to all students in our community.
So with that being said, Mrs. Rye?
So if I'm going to be asked, if I'm going to be asked for a response on this, I need clarification on if we were to put an addition on another school, is that in compliance or not with the memorandum of understanding with regard to?
An addition? You know, as a, for example, we have a school right now, Landstown Middle School and Landstown Elementary School. They're two separate units. They're two separate school units. These have some shared spaces, but they're not one school. And I think any, the only concept that has been floated at this point is that concept of two separate school units with some shared spaces, not an addition on another school. So it's a longer conversation. So, it's a longer conversation.
But it is, is that even an option in the future for...
Not for the next two years, it wouldn't be. Okay. So, at this time, could I please see a show of hands if you are in favor of keeping Bayside Sixth Grade Campus on the Jericho, in the Jericho Road facility?
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
Those opposed? Okay. So, that's, that's the direction we need, we needed. And so, it's my understanding that we're going to come back to this issue of what to do with Thurgood students in the...
Let me huddle with staff, and I'll come back to you, Madam Chair, with a timeline.
Okay. Thank you. With that being said, I think we are now ready to read into closed session.
Madam Chair, I make the following motion. Does the school board adopt the motion to recess and close meeting pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Sections 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraphs 3 and 7 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended? For (a) acquisition of real property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose, or the disposition of publicly-held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711. (a) namely to discuss: (1) contract for sale of property in the Kimpsville District;[1700.26][1700.26](b) legal matters, discussion of or consideration of interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711. (a) (1) namely to discuss: (1) release of confidential information; and (2) probable litigation related to contract matter.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed?
We have the voting board.
Use the voting board.
Okay. I thought we couldn't use it. So, the, all those in favor, please indicate on the voting board.
Don't like to...
We vote? We got to vote on this?
Come back to vote for closed.
The vote is to go into closed, please?
Okay. She said yes.
Okay.
So, what is the closed meeting?
I think we're just, we just affirmed it with our hands. We are going to go into closed into room 113 at this time.
I thought it was sixth grade, no? Will I be happy? Oh, good. It takes a lot to make me happy.